Let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hall, trustee listener.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Reed.
Here.
President Rowan.
Here. So we're not live streaming this meeting, but we're going to video record it and make it available on the Village's YouTube channel. First item on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting allows for those in attendance to address the board regarding non-agenda items. I'll ask that public comments concerning the agenda items be made at the time we cover them on the agenda. All comments should be moved in three minutes, and I'll tell you when you have to stop talking. Any non-agenda items? No? Okay. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of proposed Green Bay Trail restoration north of Maple Hill Road. And I'll ask our Public Works Director, Dave Mau, to present today.
Very good. Just a brief introduction, and then I'm going to turn it over to these ladies and we'll introduce them at that time. Back in 2011, a small group of residents, literally two residents came in to sit down with the staff to talk about their interest in removing buckthorn from a portion of the trail and other invasive plants. And from that day forward grew, evolved, the Friends of the Green Bay Trail. And in the 12 years since that time, they have worked on two major phases of the trail. Everything south of South Avenue to really transform that back to, you know, back to a condition that probably was in, probably better than it was even originally back in the day. And so we have a strong history at the staff level at working together with the Friends. They, this was formalized in 2016 when the board approved a license agreement that allows them to engage in certain permitted activities such as routine landscaping, the addition of replacement trees and other planting materials along the trail. The only requirement is that they submit a work plan to the village for review and approval, including a general description of the proposed work to be done. In your packet is such work plan for the next proposed area for restoration on the trail. And that's a relatively short 300-plus foot section of the trail just immediately north of Maple Hill Road. I'll let them get into the details on what their plan is and talk about the timing and even the restoration approach, which is quite interesting. But just want to reiterate at the onset, this is a conceptual plan at this time and has not yet been communicated to the neighbors. In discussing with Anne and Joanne, staff actually walked this section with them last Friday. Felt it was important that they knew and they were totally on board, you know, given the learning experiences of the two previous phases that we needed outreach effort. But before we initiated that, felt it was important that the board at least reacted, heard, and then reacted to the proposed plan. And if you're in agreement, then we will work closely with the Friends following this meeting to develop a communication plan. I'll reach to the neighbors and return to the board with feedback and any alterations on what the proposed plan is. So with that, I'd like to introduce Anne Riley and join Kimzie to laborers of love on the trail. That have been involved, and Joanne, I think, from day one because she walked by Betsy Leaves' House, and her life has never been the same again. Anne, probably a little more recent. But, and again, at the staff level, we have a great working relationship with this group. I think when we first sat down with them, previous village manager and I, you know, we communicated our, our initial reaction was that there's no, we don't turn down any good volunteer help. And that was certainly an understatement for what has happened over the last 12 years. So with that, we've got a short presentation. I don't know, Phil, do you have anything?
The only thing I was going to add, and just to underscore all of Dave's points already, this has been a significant undertaking that has taken place over the last 12 years. The work is now, of the Friends, is starting to lead into Winnetka. They have taken a much more proactive approach to their portion of the Green Bay Trail, due in large part to the examples set by Friends of the Green Bay Trail here in Glencoe, Highland Park as well. And, you know, I think it's worth noting that there are literally thousands of hours of volunteer work that have gone into what is really public property, public land that the village would not have had the resources to undertake on its own. Hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of plantings, of seeds, of everything that's been invested has been fundraised by the Friends over the years and put back into what has become really a jewel of our community. And we talked about this on Friday when we were walking. It's the spine of Glencoe. It runs top to bottom, right through the center of town, and is enjoyed by countless thousands of people a year. So many of those people in this room on a regular basis. So I think it's worth just underscoring those points as we think about, you know, Phase Three. If that's a good way to look at this. And, you know, I think we turn it over to you guys to walk us through that.
Thank you, and it's really good to be here. The last few times I presented to the board, I was on Zoom, so it's so good to be in person and see everybody. Like Dave and Phil said, I thought it would be a really good idea to kind of supplement the description that I provided with you, to you, with some photos. We were out there last week looking at it, but I don't know how many of you have recently been out there. I thought it would be a good idea to kind of show you the state of the area that we're talking about. And it is really only the first kind of 325 feet above the opportunities that we have there. So do we have those? Oh, there we are. Okay, good. So you can see it's really picturesque, right? We've got a beautiful look at the trail, looking, this is looking north, right at the corner of Maple Hill and Green Bay Road. We've got a bench on both sides made of stone a couple of years ago that was very, done very nicely. And the pavement is brand new as part of the whole reconstruction of that area. So you're looking at, and this was a beautiful day, there wasn't a cloud in the sky. So you can see how appealing it looks at first blush. Then you kind of want to go into it a little bit deeper. And if you go to the next slide, please, you can see that, I wanted to kind of show you the current state when you really look with a trained eye on the trees that are there. The understory is very dense. It has a lot of buckthorn, a lot of honeysuckle. That's that stuff that's kind of wrapped around, or might be bittersweet. That's bittersweet, wrapped around that tree on the right side. And it wraps around so tightly that it'll actually kill any trees around it. So that's kind of the big, kind of first thing you see when you look deeper onto the trail. If you go to the next slide, then you see kind of the under, oh, these are more trees, I should say. You have a lot of downed trees or dead trees that are almost fallen. We have a lot of Norway maples, which are considered invasive. We have very large cottonwoods. Those are actually beautiful bark, very large trees that take up significant portion of the berm on the trail. So that's kind of, again, kind of the tree state. Next is ground level. If you look kind of further at, basically at ground level, you're seeing a lot of invasive ficaria or what is lesser salidine. You see that all along this time of year. You're seeing that a lot. The purple stuff or blue stuff is Siberian squill that's also invasive. And winter creeper or euanus. Again, all of those things will kill out the ability of anything else to grow in that area. And on the right, you'll see a bunch of standing water. That is even after all of last week, remember? We have those hot days when everything kind of dried up. That was still standing water on Friday, just by having like six straight days of warmth and heat. On the next slide, in addition to kind of the vegetation and the trees, I thought I would point out, we've got an old telephone pole that's down. We've got a rusted fence on the left-hand side or the east side of the trail. And then right along in the middle of kind of where the railroad is, there's asphalt. That's been dumped, some cement kind of piled up and a bunch of rocks have just kind of been pushed into that area. So we'll need to partner with ComEd to get those things out. We'll need to work with UP, they usually provide a flagman to help for those areas that are closer to the tracks. And of course, we work with the park districts as well for areas that touch upon their territory. So I thought, in addition to kind of showing what the state of, the current state of Maple Hill is, kind of leveraging what Dave and Phil were talking about, this is Harbor to Scott project, showing some before and after photos. The one on the left looks almost exactly what Maple Hill looks like in the summer. It's, again, deep canopy, dense canopy of buckthorn and a lot of invasives. And on the right, this is, so the left would have been maybe 10 or 12 years ago. And then the right is, I think, three, between three and five years ago. So that's, you know, well after the restoration. Filled with forbs clearing out of that dense understory and just full of life and lots of very nice colors in that picture. We also have some pictures of what we did at Sosa, that's south of South Avenue. On the left, again, was pre-restation, and you can see all the buckthorn and others in there. That's looking north along the trail. And then now, we were able to keep a lot of those very, very nice trees that are in there, but we cleared the understory from all of those invasives and put some very nice forbs and perennials in there that survived quite. And shrubs, and shrubs, that's right. And that's one of the other things that is important, we know, and I'll talk about that later, is to have shrubs or trees and a good canopy on the railroad side. Good screening, especially for the neighbors that are there. And then last, we also had standing water at Sosa, just like we do at Maple Hill. And we resolved those drainage issues with the help of the village. We did put a drain in, but we supplemented it with more wetland plants. And you can see on the right-hand side, this past year, it was absolutely gorgeous. The forbs and the perennials were just filled in this area and have responded very well to the development and the work that we've done. Last, I just wanted to kind of talk more about the learnings that we've had at Sosa and the work that we do to make sure everybody is on board. Dave talked about notifying the neighbors, and this is the start of the process, right? Having this discussion with the village. And then putting out a more broad notice to the immediate neighbors to let them know what they can expect, timeline, kind of what the vision is for that area. And then again, to, again, look for good replacements for the screening. Right now, it's all buckthorn, so it's very thick. And, you know, there's this perception that it's blocking the noise or blocking the view of the trains. At Sosa, we had, you can see on, actually, this one picture here, with some really nice shrubs grouped in three or four or five, so that it provides a good screening. We also had some very large evergreens. I think we had 20 to 25 evergreens. Those were the giants that we put in on both sides to really kind of help with that screening for the neighbors.
Just a point to make there, a lot of that, there were, a number of those were proposed, but they were significantly expanded following input from the neighbors and the neighborhood with respect to their concerns. And so that adjustment was made, I think. The planting was completed in 2018. So, you know, we're five years into it now, and it's pretty impressive that all of those large
Survived, yeah.
shrubs and trees survived and are thriving.
With the help of the village, with the watering that you do during the dry spells, and that really adds value to the work that we're doing. One of the other things to point out is that we get regular advice from an ecologist, of really trained ecologists from the Botanic Garden, who comes on the trail with us once a month. And we're looking at soil, we're looking at, you know, leaves, we're looking at, you know, whatever is on the ground to really kind of test and train us, right, in what we need to do. Help us with the work that our contractors do. They help us with what is good for the volunteers to work on. So this is really a good routine that we've developed, and it's provided the expertise that we need and the knowledge that we need to do, I think, a really respectful job with this work. And then last, we call it long-term stewardship, just like we've done on the other two projects. We'll have kind of ownership of this area, this new Maple Hill area. And that means we will care for it, we will, you know, do what's right and adapt depending on how the work that we're doing, how it responds to the process that we undertake. So I feel we're good stewards of the land, you know, and then we hope the land will respectfully accept us. I think that's my, that's kind of what I wanted to say. Are there any other questions or comments that people have?
You can mention the size of this compared to the other two areas.
Yeah, why don't?
This area next to where the Booth Cottage is, what we're talking about, is about four tenths of an acre. In comparison, Sosa was 1.7 acres, and Harbor to Scott is 5.2 acres. So this is relatively small. Start on that. We're not trying to bite off more than we can chew.
And I would add to what Anne said, too, we work, you know, our forestry division works kind of in step with the Friends to identify desirable trees within this area and work around those. And we, there's a limit to what volunteers are going to be dropping and carrying out there. So we'll kind of develop our responsibilities respectively. And so our forestry crew will get in and work kind of in conjunction, so we aren't on top of each other. And we can't get in and do some of that removal effectively until some of the buckthorns are removed. So some of it will be sequenced when it's determined that we would proceed.
I think a point just to underscore, and Dave and Anne both mentioned it, is, you know, throughout all of the work that the Friends and the village have partnered on since 2011, there've been impacts to residential properties. When the first segment of the trail was undertaken, that south of Harbor area, there were a number of homes that, you know, had to some degree become very accustomed to a thick forest-like environment to the west of their homes. There was a lot of face time between Friends, village staff, Dave and I, and the Friends have spent a lot of time in people's front yards and living rooms talking about it. And the same was true with Sosa, perhaps to a larger degree. There was quite a bit of community interest and input in that discussion. And I view on the board will remember, there were a number of public discussions at the village board level about how Sosa should end up looking. And we would anticipate in this location, even though it really runs along Ravine Bluffs Park, which is where the Booth Cottage was relocated a few years ago, that there's going to be similar concerns from neighbors that those individuals are going to be worried about what it will look like, how it will be, how it will grow in, how long it will take. That's always the discussion. And, you know, when things are removed, there's kind of a starkness to that, right? And we've seen that in other aspects of village projects unrelated to this kind of thing. When something gets removed that you're used to seeing, it's, it can be jarring. I think that's something that we are very sensitive to, and one of the reasons we're talking about it tonight. Because we want to gather any initial board input that we can then take back to the neighbors. We've already talked about the opportunity to do some onsite meetings to talk about this. You know, this is a step one, probably a phase one of this phase. How does it extend further north? This is almost a mile in total. And, you know, probably two-thirds to three-quarters of it runs along Lake Shore Country Club. That's not going to be too big of a difficult sell with them. They've already been working with the Friends over the years. But we do know that there's going to be some backyards that are impacted by this now and in the future. And so thinking about ways to replace, we've talked, you know, is this, is this an opportunity for a more woody replacement versus a more wildflower and shrub prairie type replacement? Problem with that is sometimes they're slower growing, and it can take more time to fill in. And this site also doesn't have the same number of large trees on it that the Sosa site had. And those large trees did provide some, it didn't quite feel so empty when the understory was replaced. So I think those are just important points for all of us to be, to continue to be aware of. And we want to underscore, we're very much aware of that. Very concerned about making sure that neighbors feel comfortable and confident in any restoration work. And that's why we're starting tonight to talk with you, so that we can get your feedback, understand concerns that you have or thoughts that you have. And that can go into how we develop that communication plan with the neighbors and talk about options with them.
So let me say a few things. First, we are, you know, we have our paid experts in the room, but the rest of us are volunteers. And we are really, and that's what the village depends on, and we are really grateful for the enormous contribution you're making as volunteers. Second, and of course, we have our experts and our forestry experts. And I'm so glad that they were able to work successfully with you. I just got here, so I wasn't here when you did the last two rounds of this. But look at what you've learned, look what the village has learned. So we have the advantage as we go to Phase Three, all the stuff we've learned. Which includes how important it is to talk to the neighbors. And one of the things, you know, we're always balancing things. And there's clearly a village interest in what you're doing. And I think there's a state interest in getting rid of buckthorn, and they actually would help pay for that now. But we also look at what, you know, homeowners think and where we're in. So as we go forward, and we can't make everybody 100% happy all the time, but we're going to do our best to accomplish that, so that you can accomplish what you've already accomplished before in this Maple Hill piece, while making sure the neighbors understand that we care about them too, and we're going to do this as best we can. And, you know, with that, I think we should do this. You know, the next step is to work with the neighbors and make sure they're as okay with it as they can be, but this is clearly a good idea of whatever you want. Any else?
I'm just wondering, do you have drives at this point in terms of grant drinks that you can be able to present to the neighbors?
Not at this point.
So it's all in still? Do you have a budget in mind?
Well, we've thought really about the first year because that's really where the clearing takes, when the clearing takes place. And that's minimal, to be honest, because it's done mostly by volunteers, supplemented by, you know, the help that we get from the village to take it out. But then we also.
You'd be amazed about those lawyers out there with chainsaws.
Yes, we get, when we're cutting, especially buckthorn, we get a lot of volunteers.
No Rocky Mountain.
And then the only other thing we need to do is treat them to make sure they don't regrow. And that we can easily do.
Yeah, I remember that the last time around, the concerns of the neighbors, I think, were what the plans were like, and also the adequacy of funding.
Yeah.
That, you know, they felt confident. So it was just those things, I mean, I think that the neighbors, you know, had to focus.
Yeah, yeah. I personally wouldn't think, like Phil said, we have really robust fundraising, and we have not been short of funds for, for any of the work that we've been doing. We were very blessed with the generous communities, and they love the work we're doing. So we're happy with what we're getting. On the plan side, we can certainly put more detail together as we, you know, go through the first phase. And then, you know, sort of get that ready for what the neighbors, the discussion with the neighbors.
Yeah, I just think it's important for them to get in there by and to be able to show them something that looks good.
For both Sosa and the Booth Cottage, we have claimed to do a great job of communication with our residents. However, the residents have claimed they didn't know anything about until a decision was made.
So I wouldn't say we claimed that we did a great job. I think that's why we're here tonight. I'd say we learned some things from both of those processes, and we can always improve.
Good. So that's my point, I guess, is that we take that seriously. And since the Booth Cottage project, that same neighborhood may have some sensitivities, pretty fresh still, more, even more reason to double down. The thing I learned from the Sosa project on communication is that neighbors, beyond perhaps what we thought was adjacent, typed up, right? So they were vocal, even if they were several blocks away, and we perhaps didn't think that the sightlines were important to them. So going a little beyond what perhaps seems obvious, I think is just important here.
Good advice. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think it's a wonderful project. Again, just reiterating which occurred from the other members, the importance of communication. Couple ideas to explore. One is to have some good graphics or representations of what it is, I think you might do. Another thing that's a little bit out of the box is perhaps there's an opportunity for some off-site improvements that provide screening, for instance, on Willow Drive Way. I know in this area, of course, there's some park district property. There might be a chance to even do preemptive planning, planting, not planning, but planting in some areas. You know, it gets trickier when you think about developing what I'll call an intro buffer, maybe in somebody's backyard or something like that. What I just wanted to say is, we know that it's a very sensitive issue, but we want to support the issue, and doing that transition is really, is really difficult. We planar types call that a buffer yard. And, you know, there are a lot of ways to get there. Also, a good resource is Morton Reeds.
Sure.
And if you don't know people there, any of those people there?
I do, yes, yes, I do.
And they could, they could help you with some of those things on timing and plant selection.
Right, right. Sort of helping with that transition.
That's, that's terrific, yeah. So put on your salesman hat, then, do your best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming. And we'll get started on this, but after we work through this with the neighbors. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Dave, you got enough guidance for it?
Yeah, I think we do.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is review and discussion of business. Uh, okay, next item on the agenda is review and discussion of business district garbage and recycling receptacle replacements. And Dave, you're up again.
We won't go outside for this one.
I mean, we don't have pictures?
I think, I think I just saw the Wicked Witch of the West fly by.
It's like, it's like
This is why we were like
Yeah, this, it's not a highly technical discussion, but we wanted to, we wanted to circle back with the board. As you know, you may recall, the, the 2023 budget includes funding for upgrading the receptacles in the downtown business district, both garbage and recycling. The cans that are out in place, many of the cans that are out in place are date back to the first, the initial streetscape in 2001, 2002. It's a Victor Stanley product, very commonplace at the time, but they're, but they're, you don't have to look, you know, we have, we have worked hard to maintain, they've probably been blasted and painted at least three times in 20 years. But they're starting to show that wear, and there's also some challenges with that design, you know, some design flaws, I think we noted in the, in the CIP write-up, that, you know, they're, they're open to the elements. They don't have a, they don't have a lid, they have an inner decorative ring that goes over the liner can. And those, those are prone to get, to collect, you know, chewing gum and debris and disappear. And so they're not the most attractive, they're hard to keep clean. And, and over time, they've, they've gone missing in many cases that, and the identification markers on those cans are limited, because we, we don't have any, any place to put such markings. So when we completed the Tudor Court improvement, a couple of years ago, we designed into that an upgraded can, same, same manufacturer, Victor Stanley, that has a canopy over it to keep the elements out. And that's particularly important with the recyclable can, but even, even with the garbage, you know, it's not, not uncommon after we get a night like tonight, you know, where we're in the, in the operational side of it, we're dealing with, you know, several inches of water in these cans. So the photo here, which is, which is a little drier than stepping out to look at them, on the left are the, the two cans, the model, the upgraded Victor Stanley models that are over on Tudor Court. These, one of the advantages, in addition to the, to the dome over the, the canopy over the can, is that these have a hinged door down in that body, so we're pulling the liner can out. These don't have trash bags in them, they're just plastic liners, so these are emptied in season. These are emptied seven days a week in the downtown, that kind of use. And so that, that's, that's an improvement over, over what the prior addition was. And then, but, but one of the things we've talked through, we're, we're, we're an active member of the solid waste agencies, recycling, and maybe in one of the things that's out there in the recycling world is, is street, street-side recycling cans are, they're an uphill battle to begin with. And so the, the markings, the labeling that we're seeing on these more now are simple, are simple and more, you just, you know, bottles and cans, we're not trying to, we're not trying to maybe collect the same materials that you and I would collect, you know, in our households. So, so better labeling, clear identification, the recycling color, which is actually blue in, in the recycling world, we've, we've kind of gone green, which is more common from a streetscape standpoint. So the, the model on the right, these are, you may have seen these, these are in downtown Weneca. This is a, this is another product that's, that's of a comparable quality. Slightly smaller liner can, but, but, you know, these are throughout the, this is the new can in downtown Weneca. The, the cost of these is, is pretty much a wash. You know, we're looking at sixty cans, thirty, thirty garbage, thirty recycling to, to upgrade the downtown area. But that cost is, is virtually a wash. So before we pull the trigger and bring a recommendation to the board, which we'd like to do next month, we, we thought it would be, we're, because this is a, you know, this is a, a long-term investment. These, we don't get replaced every five years. Thought it'd be helpful to have some feedback, if you had any stronger opinions either way. You know, we haven't done any official village-wide poll of residents, and hadn't really planned to, but we wanted to at least get, get a sense from the board if there was any strong feeling.
So, so there's no operational difference?
Not really. The Scarborough can on the right, that, that lid spins off, and then you pull the liner out. The one on the left, the Victor Stanley, it's, it's got a hinged door, but they, they function much the same way.
One is a little larger than the other, the Victor Stanley, I think.
And they don't both make, it's a thirty-six gallon liner on the left and a thirty on the right. That's, that's not significant from an operational standpoint, given the frequency of collection.
The one you picked, not that I'm an expert, but the one you picked is better looking.
The one on the left, the Victor Stanley?
Yeah, we just
Do you want our opinions on how these things
Yeah, that's primarily, this is more
I'm voting for the left one.
This is more a streetscape, but in aesthetics, yeah.
Yeah. The one on the left.
Yes. The, the change that we've talked about making that doesn't really exist right now. Our cans are not fixed to the ground. We are probably going to fix the new ones in place, so that they maintain a more uniform look throughout the downtown. We will have uniform sizing right now. Our garbage and recycling cans are not all the same size, and so you've got a little bit of this.
And we don't have, you know, every, every garbage can is now paired with a recycling can today. That, that would be the plan going forward. Then we stand a fighting chance of, of, of calling out some of the recyclables.
Right. Did you, I'm sorry if I didn't hear, I was trying to see if the village attorney was en route, the mention of limiting what might go in the recycling.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna simplify that message, because it's, it's a, you know, you, sometimes it's, it's an interesting study of human nature, if you stand and watch one of these, you'll see anything in there, anything in their brother going in the recycling without any thought. And so, like I said, the conventional direction now is just keep it simple. You know, although, interestingly, and we're messaging that out now, now they're accepting, you know, the, the paper coffee cups in recyc, in recycling, where before technically they didn't. So we'll probably get some of that in there. But our messaging would be simple, would be clearer and simpler on the, on the lids of these domes. And we, you know, we will probably, probably include the international recycling symbol on the sides as well. And to Phil's point, these cans move around, you know, they're, you know, between the sidewalk sale and the yard festival, they, they seem to be, you know, at the discretion of the street, that advice, we, we want to get away from that. We want to space them out, we know where the, we know where the busy, active locations are. And, and then these are, these are all collective, these are the responsibility of LRS as part of our contract. So off-season, we scale it back, it's, it's four times a week. But, but during the summer months, it's virtually every day. And sometimes we'll have to make a second pass on Friday afternoon.
So the Weneca choice for the recycling, they have like the little hole, which makes, it sort of forces you to think, oh, maybe it's going to be just a can or a bottle. But we're okay, apparently, with having something that doesn't
Well, that is a distinct difference, yeah. John, John, do you want to zoom in on the one on the right there?
Oh, I was going, look at that.
Yeah, that is a, that's a structural difference. Is that going to change people's way of thinking? I couldn't tell.
I can't, Dave, if I can't remember, isn't there an option on the recycling cans to have a narrowed opening that sets
Inside, inside the
Yeah. I think that is, yeah.
So, so if, if it turns out that we're mistaken, and are we, then people just put the wrong stuff in, you could tinker with the more attractive ones you're choosing to
Presumably, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
We'll talk to, we'll talk to the supplier and, and vet out all of their stuff. And, and LRS would tell you they're into business, it's not a problem, you need to, want to call, and they'll, they, they don't, you know, unless it's, unless it's a bad, you know, extreme contamination, they'll still collect it with their recycling truck, and, but just more work on the, on the processing end. But that, that occurs with our curbside containers, you know, it's residential. As you, as you probably saw some of the survey data when the STF did the curbside. Very interesting what people will do with their recycling.
I will say, one, one thing to add, we have shared information with the STF, talking about ways to better message with respect to the recycling cans. And we're going to work with them to continue that process with respect to what gets printed on the cans and how that, how that messaging is, is expressed.
Is there anybody here who wants to admit they like the Weneca choice? Okay.
I, I do know, I had a question.
Sure.
Um, so I'm just wondering, Friends Park, I realize that's Park District. Are you going to be putting the cans in there so there'd be a continuity of
We have, we currently have, there are, I think there's three pairs of cans on Tudor. One, one are, one are the entrance to Friends. Now, these aren't identical to what's interior to Park locations, but we, we, we could, we certainly could talk with Park District on, on, on future updates that they're making, that maybe we have some synergy between.
Just because, I mean, that's the only park where it's so integral to the
Yeah, and we will, we will introduce these then into our bus stop locations, because we've got some locations, we've got, we would have some recycled plastic containers, but not, no recycling.
We've worked with Park District to standardize bench designs and things like that along the Green Bay Trail, so that we've, you know, we unify that. And so that, that's a natural extension of that, that's easy to talk to the Park District about.
Yeah. The, the cans on the, on the left, are they available in slightly smaller size?
You know, the, the jump, unfortunately, they jumped to a, a much smaller, a twenty-four gallon liner that we, we think is too, too small for the application. There's not a, there's not a like
Cupping in between.
You know, in between.
Yeah, if there were a thirty, if there was a thirty gallon, that might work, but yeah.
To Phil's point, we have, Victor Stanley, we have thirty-three, the old store, it's been thirty-three, it's been forty-five gallons that are out in the downtown. That's, it's a, it's a, that's a big, it's a big presence, probably more than we want on the public walk, so. You had, you have concerns about the scale?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I like the one on the left better than the right, but I'm concerned that it's bigger.
Yeah, I, you know, I think out in the, out in the world out there, the forty-five gallon cans that exist are larger in scale than these on the left. But they may not look it, because they don't have the canopy on the top. The canopy does add some height to them. But again, as Dave said, there's, there's an operational value to that.
Yes, yeah, I understand why you want
Yeah. These are kind of the successor design to what we have in the downtown. What we have in the downtown's been discontinued for a number of years. And so these are similar, but we should, we should, we could have taken a picture of the, well, I'll just run outside and take a look at the old ones right now.
These are razor heavy, these are Both of them are well-constructed. I mean, there's, there's a lot of longevity with the product. We just, when we pull the trigger, we, there's no, there's no lease-to-own option, so.
You got it.
Any else? I think you have direction from us on this one, too.
Pretty good, okay. We, we could probably do part of closed session now, if you want to.
Okay, let's do it.
Steve's on the train, but we don't need him for the whole thing. So Joe's here. He made it.
Welcome back. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn the committee of hold?
Do you, well, you can adjourn to go into closed session, and then we can adjourn the public meeting.
We're adjourning to go into closed session.
For, for two things. For approval of closed session minutes and pending litigation and probable imminent litigation.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
There are second. We need a roll call for this one?
We do.
Roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
One might say with this one, yes.
Trustee listener. Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdon.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Bree.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.